We're tenth public meeting for the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. This is a little bit irregular in terms of schedule. We normally meet on Thursdays at 2:00 PM, but due to Commissioner availability, we rejiggered things to 9:00 AM. So, much thanks to everyone who was able to make it in the morning. So, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a slightly smaller Board of County Commissioners today. Commissioner Slotnick was tied up with some other meetings and unable to join us, but we have two of us, and as luck would have it, that constitutes a quorum. So, are there any public announcements by staff? Any public comments on items not on today's agenda? So, this would be your opportunity to comment on absolutely anything you want, other than items that we're already going to have a discussion about. Okay, just a couple of housekeeping items for us to consider. If you did not do so already when you came in, please sign the sign-in sheet on your way out, just so that we know who is here and how to spell your names accurately, so it's correctly noted in the public record. For each public hearing, I'll go ahead and open it at the appropriate time. There will be an opportunity for a staff report. The applicant or applicant's representative will have an opportunity to speak. We'll open it up for broader public comment if any broader publics are in the audience today. We'll close the public hearing. There will be discussion on the part of the Commission, and then we will take action on the item. So, before we get to that, though, our current claims list, and this is claims received by the Commissioner's Office between September 25th and October 2nd, total $2,690,812.61. If anyone who is here present or in our viewing audience is interested in what adds up to that amount, you can go to our website, find the electronic packet for today's meeting, and drill down into that amount and see what claims actually were paid over that timeframe. So, to kick things off this morning, I'd like to open a public hearing on a resolution addressing partnership models for facilities of the Missoula County Fairgrounds. And we will begin with a staff report from Emily Brock, the Fairgrounds Director.
Good morning. It's the first time I've spoken this morning. This presentation will be immersively brief, as I know you have a packed agenda, and we discussed the site even in several public meetings in the past. In fact, the resolution before you today does not require a public hearing. However, the county attorney's office, and I chose to bring it to you in this forum in case there is public comment. And I understand that you're planning to rework the resolution, tweak it, and that's fine, but we'll still hold the public hearing today, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. There are just a few grammatical and typographic things we might want to fix in it, and so we'll deal with that between now and next week. So, we'll have the public hearing today, and then we will, next week, at one of our administrative meetings, take formal action on it and sign the resolution. So, go ahead, Emily.
The Missoula County Fairgrounds is a 46-acre parcel of public land owned by Missoula County with a mission to promote agriculture, education, culture, recreation, community, and to reflect the beauty and history of western Montana. We recently underwent a two-phase redevelopment planning process that included extensive public involvement. In 2016, the first phase addressed what facilities will be renovated or constructed and what existing elements would be eliminated. In 2017, a second planning phase created and adopted the design guidelines and schematic plan to identify the function, intent, and character of specific design elements, with the goal of ensuring consistent, high-quality design and clear expectations as the fairgrounds are renovated and redeveloped. The fairgrounds redevelopment plans are holistic by design in order to integrate and complement all uses and facilities throughout the entire site. The county has begun construction on the utilities, existing buildings, and trails. We are about to begin work on the plazas and the landscape. Our next step is to begin construction of -- oops, messed up my slides. So, this is the, sort of, the order of how things went in terms of master planning, design guidelines, and the schematic design. You can see we're at construction documents now for the trails, utilities, and historic buildings. The streetscape is still in planning, and the new buildings are going to be coming forward. And so, like I said, our next step is to start constructing new facilities, and partners housed in the new buildings have requested guidance as to how Missoula County will expect the new facilities to be managed and governed. They also seek assurance for their funders that they may remain on the fairgrounds for the foreseeable future. From a staff perspective, this policy puts to rest some of the lingering issues that have sort of plagued the fairgrounds over the past few decades. And briefly, I'm just going to go through what the new facilities are. The new learning center is a future home of the Missoula County Weed District and Extension Office, as well as a new Butterfly House and Insectarium and the Missoula Conservation District. The Weed District and Extension Office are county departments or affiliates. The Conservation District is its own governmental entity, and the Butterfly House and Insectarium is a private nonprofit governed by a board of directors representing the community. The Livestock and Equestrian Center is a space for youth agriculture and livestock education programs. It will be managed by the Fairgrounds team and rented, or sometimes loaned, to partners for use. Primary partners will be 4H, FFA, and the County Weed District. The Fairgrounds team will also manage the new rodeo arena and rent, or sometimes loan, to partners, or even hold our own events, such as, you know, the Western Montana Fair. Our key partners are PRCA, which is the professional rodeo circuit, National High School Rodeo, U.M. Rodeo, and 4H. It has not been determined what entity will manage the new ice rinks. The fairgrounds have been partnering with the City of Missoula Glacier Ice Rink and Missoula Area Youth Hockey Association, Missoula Figure Skating Club, and the Missoula Curling Club to design and raise funds for a new facility. As I said before, the partnership policy seeks to provide clarity on ownership, management, and governance of the new facilities, and to provide assurance that the partnerships will be long-lasting. It applies to the entire fairgrounds. In many ways, the resolutions may seem, before you, may seem obvious or redundant to existing code. However, both the fairground staff and the Weed District staff agree that this clarity is necessary for us to move forward. The policy makes clear that each partner and each partnership is unique and deserves special consideration and flexibility. The fairgrounds was built on a handshake deal, and for a long time, it was murky who owned what and who was responsible for what. And that worked for a while, but eventually, this model led to neglect. And we're a professional outfit now, and in these modern and sometimes litigious times, we need to know who is responsible for what on the fairgrounds. This policy clarifies that all buildings and facilities on the Missoula County Fairgrounds are owned by Missoula County. Partners may own the contents of the building, and the agreements must allow access to the building. The policy reiterates, which is already in state law, that our leases shall not exceed 10 years. It also provides assurance to partners that we will renew the leases unless there is gross malfeasance, and it does this by using language that says it would be rebuttably presumed that the leasie is the most appropriate partner to lease the facility for an additional 10-year period. John Hart can speak to that after where we got that language. Because some of our partners are governmental entities, it applies the same consideration to interlocal agreements. The policy provides that the fairgrounds' mission to promote agriculture, education, culture, recreation, community, and to reflect the beauty and history of western Montana is espoused by partners, and that partners align goals, management decisions, and specific organizational interests with those of the fairgrounds. Using language found in state statute, the resolution provides that partners advance the public benefit and welfare of county residents. And finally, the policy ensures that the governing boards of the new facilities represent the general community. And that is my immersively brief presentation. I will pass it off back to you.
Thank you. John, did you have anything you wanted to add about the rebuttable presumption language?
Commissioners, the only thing I'd add is that that language comes directly from our use and maintenance agreements that we have with some of our partners at our county parks, primarily at Big Sky Park, out by Target Tower Road in Spurgeon. And having that, that language helps us not run afoul of the 10-year restrictions on leases, and it's worked very well to create long-lasting partnerships that work for the groups that are managing the parkland, and also for the public, and then for government and staff.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak related to the resolution? Come on up. And as folks come up, please hit the button on the base of the microphone to turn the light green. Thank you.
Test.
Hi, I'm Jill Dunn. I am the president of the Missoula Figure Skating Club, and I wanted to just thank the commissioners and the fairground staff for this proposed resolution. I've been involved in ice sports on the fairgrounds since its beginning in 1997, and we have a strong club, and I am hopeful that, in the future, we can continue to work together, all of the ice users, in partnership to create a space for the community that's, that endures to the benefit of the entire community and the diversity of our community in Missoula. I also want to say that I appreciate this resolution and its thoughtfulness, because as a public servant myself, I think it's important for us to be stewards of public land and public property, particularly in this day and age, and to look forward with a larger vision that's beyond maybe our tenure on a board, my tenure on a board, like the figure skating board, and make sure that those, those facilities are there for the future, for future generations, and we put in place really strong policies, and I think you've done that with this resolution, and I want to say thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Counselor?
Good morning. My name is Heather Harp, and I'm a city counselor here in Missoula in Ward III, but I'm also a past president of the Board of the Missoula Area Youth Hockey Association. And I became a hockey player when I was in my mid-30s, and I have to say, it's one of the most vibrant communities that I've ever participated in. But, that's just hockey. What Jill kind of spoke to is just the love for ice sports in general. But when I talk to people about the future of the fairgrounds, the thing I always kind of talk about, it's not about hockey. It's not about figure skating. It's about these, this very eclectic group of people who are incredibly passionate, whether they are show dog lovers, or they enjoy hockey, or whatever their passion is, it converges on the fairgrounds in the center of our city. What this resolution speaks to is making a level playing ground for all of us to come together. I really do appreciate the thoughts that you, that you put forward in terms of making sure that leases with all organizations are in the same timeframe, that there, that there are options for renewal based upon their past performance, which I think is a really key ingredient in this going forward, as you continue to negotiate contracts with all of the user groups. So, thank you for all your thoughtfulness. Emily, I want to say especially thank you for all of your leadership, bringing this to fruition. It has been a yeoman's work, and I really do appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on the resolution? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions right now? One here?
No.
Comments?
Echoing Heather's, yeah, thank you, Emily. This is really exciting, and thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, thank you so much, Emily, and everyone else who had a hand in working on this. This looks really good, and as I mentioned, I don't see anything substantively changing, just cleaning up a little bit of the, the language in the resolution before we sign the thing. And so, that will happen at a Commissioner Administrative Meeting next week, either Tuesday or Wednesday, probably. So, you'd be more than welcome to show up for that, but I don't think it's going to be a nail-biter moment as to whether or not this is adopted, just some language cleanup. So, thank you all for coming out for this item. So, our next public hearing, which I will open, is on the proposed Zamuda family transfer. And once we get the technology set up here, we'll have a staff report from Lauren Miller with Community and Planning Services.
For the record, Lauren Miller, planner with Community and Planning Services. This request today from Nancy Zamuda to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter. The subject property is located in the Nine Mile area. The tract we're looking at today is approximately 20 acres in size. Currently, the property has one single-family dwelling unit on the property. You can see there with the green dot, and an outbuilding on site. The property is unzoned, and a portion, a small portion of the property is located within the FEMA-mapped Zone A floodplain area. The proposed lot layout results in two total tracts, each a little over 10 acres in size. Tract C-2, with the home in the outbuilding, will remain in ownership by the applicant, Nancy herself. Tract C-1 will be transferred to the applicant's daughter. The application does note that the proposed transfer tract is to be used for residential purposes by the recipient. With any requests, we look at the rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria. Those that were triggered are noted in bold in the staff report. None of the rebuttable presumptions were triggered with the proposal, and two of the general evasion criteria were triggered. As I discussed earlier, one of the general evasion criteria is if the proposed division violates applicable floodplain regulations or creates access to building sites within a flood hazard area, including within a mile of Zone A designated floodplain. A portion of the property is located within Zone A of the floodplain. Both of the existing buildings are outside of the floodplain area. The applicant did provide us with an exhibit showing spot elevations on the property. So, at this time, that was, provided adequate information to allow for the Missoula County Floodplain Administrator to waive the required engineered flood analysis at this time. The second evasion criteria that was triggered was if the proposed division is incompatible with the growth policy. The division will result in two residential lots, each approximately 10 acres in size. The land use designation in this area is open and resource, one dwelling unit per 40 acres, so the proposal would exceed the density recommended by the land use plan. If we look at other parcels in the immediate vicinity, a majority of this area has been subdivided by certificate of surveys, so using the exemption process. In total, there were six total certificate of surveys that were recorded in the immediate vicinity that I looked at. Three of those occurring in the 1980s by occasional sale, which is an exemption that we don't have today in state statute. Those tracts resulting from the occasional sale were anywhere between 15 to 20 acres in size. And more recently, in the early 2000s, 2001, 2003, there are two family transfers that were completed in the area, one resulting in a 16-acre and 1-acre parcel, and another creating a 17-acre and 2-acre tract from those exemptions. So, with that, staff is recommending that the request by Nancy Zamuda to utilize the family transfer to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter be approved, and I have a couple of questions for the applicant, if she would like to come forward.
Ms. Zamuda, come on up. It looks like your microphone's already on, so don't have to worry about that.
If you can just state your name for the record, please.
Nancy Zamuda.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year? Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed?
No. Well, my daughter's going to build a house with her husband. That's, and that's all.
Okay. And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. And Ms. Zamuda, before you go sit down, is there anything else you want to say? And we also, I don't know if you have a representative here also, but your representative could also speak for you.
Well, I'm just, I'd be so pleased if this would happen, because my daughter has come here to help me. She's going to have a baby, and her husband's a big help. I have a long drive, a half-mile, and he plows it for me. My husband passed away three years ago, so it's just my son and my disabled son and me that live there. So, it'd be a great help to have them close by.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak related to the proposed family transfer? Nope. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion on the part of the Commission, questions to begin with, I guess. I've got, oh, go ahead. So, I've got a couple of questions. So, Lauren, if, if this were going through subdivision review as a minor subdivision, obviously, what's your sense, or staff's sense of, are there, are there impacts that, through this division, that would be likely flagged or addressed through the subdivision process that would otherwise slip through the cracks if we're just doing a simple family transfer?
Yeah, so, as you know, there's obviously a lot more criteria that's reviewed with the entire subdivision review. You know, one of the biggest things being that the portion of the property is within, oh, yes.
Bring it back up.
You love your map, so yes, here it is. I get it.
Thank you.
Yes. So, one of the bigger things being, really, and I apologize for not having, you should have it in your packets, the portion of the property that is within the floodplain there, really only encompasses a small area down here by the creek. So, in terms of impacts with the floodplain being a big deal on the property, I wouldn't see that as being a major reason for denial. Looking towards the growth policy, obviously, this is in an area that hasn't been updated since 1975. Yep. This, this time.
Did you want the growth policy layer? I don't know if you have that handy.
I don't have them. I can definitely pull it up for you guys right now.
So, for folks who are watching this, this is a handy feature of the Missoula County website. If you want to see information about your property or other folks' properties and land use, zoning and such, just click on Property Info on the homepage of the website.
So, as you can see, yep, so--
2002 Regional Land Use Plan?
Yep, yep, which was an update from the 1975 comprehensive plan. So, as you can see, those other parcels that I were talking about that have gone through this process were designated that same open and resource designation. You know, with these family transfer exemptions, obviously, we see a majority of them being in these more rural areas with the same land use designation, only because you cannot use the family transfer if the parcel's already gone through subdivision review. And I do just want to, in terms of the growth policy, as a reminder, in state statute, 761605, referencing that the Section B, "A governing body may not withhold, deny, or impose conditions on any land use approval or other authority to act based solely on compliance with the growth policy adopted pursuant to this chapter." So, just as a reminder, that growth policy is definitely something that's reviewed, but is not, you know, the sole determining factor for, for either subdivision or exemption review.
Thank you. Additional questions?
No, thank you.
We can, we can take motions if, if you're ready for that. I guess I would just say, yeah, my own, this seems like a completely legitimate use of a family transfer. My only heartburn related to this is, and it's not unique here, but any time that we are moving in the opposite direction and farther away from alignment with our growth policy goals, that's problematic, and it may just mean that it's time, long overdue, that we revisit our growth policy and see if it is what we really envisioned in these areas in the year 2019.
Beautifully said. So, that was exactly my feelings, and this is not picking on this particular project. So, I'll, I'll move to approve. What's the correct language that we're supposed to be using here?
I've got it on the screen right in front of you as well.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
It's in the 72-point font on the screen right there.
Okay. I move that we, the Missoula County Community and Planning Services staff recommend that the request by Nancy Zamuda to utilize family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to immediate family members as presented in the exemption application affidavit be approved.
Okay, don't you love the passive voice? So, I--
Thank you. I was--
I will, I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Okay, our next family, family transfer, our next public hearing, which I will open, is related to a proposed IB nursery subdivision, and we will begin with a staff report by our very own Community and Planning Services staff member, Tim Worley.
For the record, I am Tim Worley with CAPS. Good morning, Commissioners. This is IB's Nursery Subdivision. It's a proposal for a subdivision that amounts to the lifting of an agricultural covenant. The parcel was created in 2004 through subdivision exemption. It is ag-restricted, so agricultural uses only are permitted, and that means no commercial uses, no sanitation facilities. Property is 6.33 acres, and it has a number of buildings, has parking areas. Nursery plants dominate the western portion of the property, and then Butler Creek is found along the eastern edge of the property. The ag covenant is contained within your applicant packet. It's Resolution 2004-059. It prescribes agricultural uses only, and structures requiring water and sewer cannot be constructed on the property. Here's a view of the neighborhood showing the parcel. This is in the Butler/Laval Creek Valley. We have the Y to the north and west, Circle H Ranch, West Point, the Good and Kyle neighborhood, and then the Development Park, which is actually City of Missoula now, to the south and east. This is the growth policy map for the area. This is designated rural residential and agriculture, and the intensity of development recommended ranges from one home per 10 acres to one home per 2 acres, but agriculture is considered as a primary use. So, getting to one of the heart of the issues with this project is anything non-agricultural with agricultural covenant in a parcel is not technically legal. For some time, there has been a commercial nursery with onsite sales. The onsite sales portion of what's gone on on the property has waned significantly, from what we gather. But there are also a lack of proper building permits for some of the buildings, a lack of electrical permits. There's fill in floodplain. There's no sanitation provided, despite the fact that there are folks working onsite, and they do need sanitation per the health code. And the Conservation District has also noted, noted a 310 violation for disturbance in Butler So, the Coordinated Compliance Group, which encompasses Health Department, CAPS, the County Attorney, and the Building Division, has worked for years on this project, and has concluded that going through subdivision is the best remedy to address the issues on this property. Subdivision amounts to, if you approve the subdivision today, it would-- Subdivision amounts to, if you approve the subdivision today, it would lift the ag covenant, and it, we think, is the best way to remedy onsite violations. There are a number of conditions of approval, however, that would have to be met. So actions taken by Missoula County include the filing of a limited use agreement, which the applicant has signed onto. Power has been cut off on the property because of the lack of proper permitting, but a generator is occasionally run on the property to maintain the nursery stock. My understanding is that it powers the well that's onsite, but there's a limitation to what uses should be going on on this property, per this agreement. Butler Creek Road runs along the eastern edge of this property. It's a county-maintained paved road. Angus Lane runs along the northern edge of the property, and it's a private road that meets essential subdivision regulations standards for this project. So some onsite paving will be required per the Health Department. That's because we're in the air stagnation zone. And I should note that this project is going through sanitation review so that a septic system can be installed. So Butler Creek, again, runs along the eastern edge of the property. There is a riparian area associated with this, and we've heard from Fish, Wildlife, and Parks that fish do run in this reach of Butler Creek in the spring. A management plan has been submitted for this riparian area, and this management plan notes that there's a 15-foot buffer area that they're committing to. We're recommending that that be expanded to 50 feet, per recommendations from both Fish, Wildlife, and Parks and Audubon. Fish, Wildlife, and Parks updated their recommendations, which were originally for a 100-foot buffer. And commissioners, you'll see the latest communication that we have from Fish, Wildlife, and Parks in front of So the, the management plan includes some remediation that needs to be done in the riparian area, including the planting of riparian plants, the removal of encumbrances, including a pile of tree stumps. There's some railroad ties that need to go, and also some waste concrete. Again, we're also recommending that the buffer be expanded from 15 feet to 50 feet, that fill be removed in that area. And that's partially a floodplain recommendation as well, just so that we get more function to the floodplain, since there has been fill in there. We're recommending no storage or parking within that 50-foot buffer area, and an open style of fencing to define the boundary. Now, I should note that on this slide, the boundary that you're seeing is actually the mapped floodplain boundary, which we're recommending be placed on the final plat. But there's also, the 15-foot buffer that's recommended is right along this western and eastern edge, and we're recommending that that be expanded to 50 feet.
Tim, I'm sorry, the fencing that is to fence the riparian area or the fencing of the project?
It's-
Boundary. What's, what's the boundary?
It's fencing the western boundary of Butler Creek at the edge of the 50-foot buffer. It basically allows the buffer to have, to provide breathing room for the riparian area.
Okay, thanks.
As part of our recommendations regarding fencing, we are recommending that a small section of fence be removed along the northern edge of the property, and it would just be this section that you see in the photo adjacent to the creek itself. We know that there are security concerns on site, and so it would, I would have a hard time estimating, but it might be a 10-foot section of fencing that we are recommending as a condition, that that section be removed. But the rest of the fencing on the northern edge of the property could continue. This shows the Butler Creek floodplain. The extent of that floodplain has been determined through a survey. And again, our recommendation is, and this comes from the floodplain administrator, that fill in that area be removed, and that the floodplain boundary, which is this blue boundary right here, we're recommending that that end up on the final plat. We're also making a recommendation that the Building Division have the opportunity to do an onsite inspection to see what needs to be permitted, essentially, when it comes to needed building permits and needed electrical, et cetera. And here are a couple examples of both permitted and what we think are unpermitted buildings. On the left-hand side, that photo shows both what we think is a permitted building, this membrane, the white membrane house that you can see just barely on the right-hand side of that photo. And then the blue building and the two storage tanks on the left-hand side of that photo, we believe that those are not permitted. So fire protection is proposed for roughly 1,000-square-foot office building that will be built, but old buildings haven't been addressed as far as fire protection is concerned. We are recommending, therefore, some combination of sprinklers and water storage or hydrants. It really is up to the applicant, working with Missoula Rural Fire, to come up with sort of a package that will work for this site. There is an unpermitted well on the site, per DNRC, and their recommendation is to obtain a water right for this well. And what Jim Nave from DNRC told me is that this is like getting a fishing license. It's not that difficult, and he would definitely recommend that that be done as part of this process. Well, what's the motivation for follow-through on this process for the applicant? It allows for the power to be turned back on. It would make the structures legal, and it would allow sanitation to proceed, sanitation review. And then on the flip side, if this subdivision were denied, we're seeing some problems with that. For the riparian and floodplain violations, those violations would remain, and they would be left to the floodplain administrator and the Conservation District to remedy. And we don't see a lot of motivation for the applicant to remedy anything if the subdivision weren't approved. And also, we have a number of unpermitted buildings on site, and the Building Division has said that those might pose a safety risk. And again, they would be sort of out on an island pursuing those violations if the subdivision weren't approved. And denial would also stop sanitation review. The ag covenant would remain in place with the violations that have been noted. So it kind of puts the, the project back in a, in a violation loop. And we feel that taking this through subdivision review is as much as could be gained as actually taking this to court. Just talking to John Hart yesterday, that's what he said. This, this is probably the better remedy. I mean, really, court is another remedy that's probably not optimal. So in conclusion, we recommend approval of the subdivision, subject to conditions of approval. And our motion is that the IB's Nursery subdivision be approved, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
Thank you. Would, well, before we have the applicant or applicant's representative, Gina, is there anything you wanted to add to the staff report at this time, or are you just available for questions?
Yep, just your, in case there are questions.
Okay, thank you. That was Gina Miller from the Missoula County Health Department in the audience. So would the applicant or applicant's representative like to present?
Thank you, Chairman Strohmeyer. For the record, I'm John Kellogg with Professional Consultants, here on behalf of Tim IB. When, I think last Monday, I mentioned that the agricultural covenant exemption has gone through some changes since, in fact, since this was created back through the 90s and early 2000s. An agricultural exemption was placed on property when it was questionable whether they were going to put sanitary facilities on the property. And the general way that the agricultural exemption was lifted then was when the owner of the property decided what they were going to do with it, and went to the Health Department and went through DEQ review for the sanitary facilities or drainage plants and such on the site. It doesn't necessarily, it didn't necessarily mean at that time that there was, there were agricultural qualities to the property that were unique or anything. In this case, the soils are local, of local importance. They're not prime ag land, so there's some agricultural value that the Hanson Ranch had in it, but it was at, it was at a part of the ranch that was separated by Angus Lane, probably had a little difficulty in irrigating that portion of the property. And so that, in addition to the fact it was right adjacent to the interstate, prompted Hanson's, I think, to, to look for selling a portion of it. So when Mr. IB, in fact, I was just talking to him, when he came to the commissioners in 2004 for the agricultural covenant, at that time, lifting it was a fairly simple process. It wasn't, it didn't go through, have to go through subdivision review and the process that we're going through now. And in fact, Tim said he was told at the time that it would be a fairly simple process of just going through sanitary review, DEQ review, and such. That step, unfortunately, when, when Tim had to go and enter into it, became fairly complex because it opened up the need for subdivision review, and that triggered floodplain review and, and a number of other requirements along the way. And so that kind of snowballed into the difficulties that Tim has encountered with the various permits that Mr. Worley has, has itemized for us. With that in mind, I'd appreciate what Tim Worley and other staff have done in a number of onsite visits to the property, and we've worked out with them some solutions to the, the issues that, that have been presented. And I think Mr. IB is anxious to get going on, on resolving these. Can you bring up one of the plats that has the photo in the background? That'd be a good one, I guess. The riparian area that, that we prepared a plan for is a kind of interesting riparian area. There's a pretty good growth of hardy riparian vegetation along that creek channel. I've never seen water running in the creek, and I understand it runs for maybe a month or two at the most in the spring. And so that's the riparian vegetation there that's taken hold is, is pretty good. It's a fairly good set of hardy plants. The reason that we had initially proposed the 15-foot buffer was due to the fact that throughout most of the year, the ground adjacent to that creek bed is dry. And so any effort at revegetating the riparian area is going to involve irrigation, some probably weed control, and a fairly active effort to get the plants to grow. Tim IB, a couple of years back, planted a number of dogwoods right along the creek. Those have subsequently died because of lack of water. So this is going to be a concerted effort to, to get that riparian area back and healthy, I guess. For that reason, I would like to propose that, I know Fish, Wildlife, and Parks has, has reduced their request for the riparian from 100 feet to 50 feet, but that 50 feet taken on either side of the riparian area essentially occupies about a little over an acre of the, of the property there. And that's a fairly extensive area to, to get revegetated. I, I would like to propose that we could reduce that to 25 feet, and it would make a much more manageable strip of land along the, the riparian area that, that would be probably a lot more feasibly revegetated. And there'd be less effort at, at weed control that would have to, to come into play there. And that would be under Condition Number Nine, where it says the plat shall depict a 50-foot wide riparian resource buffer. And, and I would propose that that 50-foot be amended to 25 feet. That doesn't change any of the floodplain issues that, that are being required by the administrator. And the second issue, and I think, Tim, if I could understand clearly, on Condition 15, where you're talking about removing that fence that's, it's kind of a little dilapidated there, the chain link fence, the concern that Mr. IB has along that frontage there is security. He's lost quite a bit of equipment over the years to, to folks walking off with it. That stretch, I think, that is in the photo there is right at where Butler Creek passes under Angus Lane, and-
Can we see on the map? Where that is?
That was Commissioner-
Yeah, right here.
And so what's, what's the, what's the photo of the cyclone fencing?
Yeah, the photo's looking south at a 10 to 15-foot wide section of fence right here.
And what's occurred here is that that chain link fence has gotten a little more dilapidated because of Tim's, the shutdown of any activity, repairing buildings and fences on the property due to this agreement with the county. What I would hope is that in working with staff, the security necessary to protect Tim's equipment on the, on the site can be preserved. If it backs up too far, and if, I think you're talking about a pass-through fence adjacent to the riparian area, if that occurs, it'll allow foot traffic on and off the property pretty easily. And, and I guess that's what we'd like to make sure is, is protected.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess maybe instead of removing the fence to repair, the fence might be an op, option there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. IB, anything you want to say?
I guess that's already on. Well, yes, thank you, staff, for doing all the work that you do. Kind of getting back to one violation that I have on the 310 permit. We did plant the plants twice that they requested. Of course, we had no electricity and no water, so we weren't going to water the plants with, with buckets, and we really didn't have the water. So those did fail, but they were planted as requested, and I did submit the plan to them as to what I was going to plant. And so as John had stated, we kind of got into this mess by unknowingly thinking that when we got our farmland exemption, we had gone through the complete process of subdivision with Eli and Associates. It was denied because of flood issues. At that point in time, we didn't have the money to do a floodplain analysis. So we did the farmland exemption, knowing that when we could get the money together to do a floodplain analysis so that we could get it mapped, then we would get the sanitary restrictions lifted. So because we needed to expand from our present, or what was our present facility, we put that up for sale, and it sold. And so we moved over there and made application to- And so we moved over there and made application to get the sanitary restrictions lifted and found out that the rules had been changed. Kind of put us in panic mode. And so at that, I'm sorry, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold here, so I'm. So we kind of just tried to get into it and find out what we needed to do and found out that we were behind the eight ball. And, and so causing ourselves one problem led to causing ourselves another problem. And, and it snowballed into the point where we're at today. And hopefully this is going to clear this up. I tried to stay in contact with the, the building department and with John Hart. And of course, obviously, we've dealt with the engineers and the, and staff here on this stuff too and, and trying to get it done. As far as the fence goes, Paul Hanson still runs cows over there. So we kind of have to have a fence to keep his cows from coming in. That's one reason the fence is there. And the other reason is we have had two trucks stolen. You might have seen the one that was on the news where the guy ran over a house and threw East Missoula with it. That was one of my trucks that got stolen out of the place. So we try to keep it locked up and, and keep what security we have now is basically solar lights and game cameras. And that, that's not ideal, but it, it works okay. So I appreciate you taking a look at this. I would like to see the reduction in the riparian area buffer simply because it takes a lot of ground from us that, and I mean, that's one-sixth of the ground that it would take. And it would pretty much eliminate everything on the Butler Creek side too. So, or on the Butler Creek roadside. So I'd like to see that reduction if we can get it. It'd really be, be nice. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone else like to comment on the proposed lifting of the agricultural covenant? Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing discussion. Our questions?
I guess I'd want to hear from staff or the riparian experts and for, and John Hart. Yeah, so here, what are your comments on the requests for fencing and the, and the buffer?
Tim, start, let's start with the riparian buffer going from the proposed 50 feet down to the suggested 25 feet, which is all less than what Fish Wildlife and Parks was originally proposing, correct?
Right, we're just going with the number that we've heard from Five Valleys Audubon and from Fish Wildlife and Parks. I think any sort of buffer, if properly demarcated, would be a gain here. So I personally wouldn't object to shrinking it from 50 to 25. There is a little bit of condition work to do if, if we go from 50 to 25. I don't know if I can offer you an expert opinion. And our regulations don't prescribe numbers on how wide these buffers should be. So I guess we've heard from the experts and they recommend 50. There's sort of a pragmatic side to this from, from Tim's perspective too, as far as making it work and introducing some plantings in that area. So ultimately, we could facilitate a change to 25 if, if the board is amenable to that.
John, do you have anything to add on the buffer width?
No, I don't. There isn't any legal requirement that it be 50 feet or 25 feet or, or any feet. This, this is a way to mitigate the, the impacts to the riparian and other natural resource. And, and it also is a way to restore some of the damage that, or ensure that the restoration is, is appropriate and long-term to, to take care of the damage that's been sustained to that riparian area and the floodplain.
So Tim, on this, on this point again, in the riparian management plan, whether we're talking 50 feet or 25 feet, what's the extent of restoration that's required in there? Because I guess this relates to how much would need to be replanted and potentially irrigated to keep it alive, which at least partially sounds like was, has been a function of no electricity, being able to irrigate it. So maybe, maybe that concern is somewhat mitigated, at least from the irrigation standpoint, by having adequate electricity to irrigate it. But could you talk a little bit about the, the management plan?
Well, condition 10 is for riparian restoration and it doesn't say that you have to have dogwoods stretching throughout that whole buffer area. It just that the applicant would have to submit a restoration plan and we would probably run it by folks that know more about these sorts of things as to the adequacy of the plan. And then they have to execute the plan. And part of the plan is the plantings have to have a certain rate of survival over time. So that's the irrigation piece. But
So even if, if it's a 50-foot buffer, that would not mean it would, the entire 50 feet would have to be homogeneously vegetated in
Right.
Same manner. So I mean,
Yeah, we had no expectation as to that.
Anything else on the riparian buffer before we talk about fencing?
No, just that, yeah, it needs to be a plan of, of plants that will actually work and do the job of floodplain control or
Yeah, come on up.
John Kelly again. The need for weed control is, is going to be important too. Because if we don't fully vegetate the, the entire area, there's going to be weeds coming in. And so that's why I was hoping a more intensive area where the combination of weed control and the issues that Tim Worley has brought up in, in condition 10 could be applied effectively.
But I guess what I was trying to get at is presumably in your management plan, it could be tailored, even if it's a 50-foot buffer, it, it could, within zones of that 50 feet, the, the treatment could, could vary. Certainly weed control would be essential throughout, but I would certainly hope even if there's only a 25-foot buffer, you'd be doing weed control on the, the broader parcel.
Certainly, yes.
Okay, thanks. Let's hold that thought. We can always come, yeah, Mr. Ivey, come on up.
And I'd, well, I'd just like to make a little, Tim Ivey again, would like to make a little bit of a clarification here. The riparian area that we disturbed wasn't very big. What happened was we built some really nice concrete bins for storing all our rock and gravel in the floodplain.
Floodplain.
Okay, didn't know that. Didn't think we needed a permit for concrete bins, but we made that mistake again. So we tore those out. And when we tore those out, we had this big, I don't even know what you call it, big front-end loader. I'll put that, put it there. And my brother backed into the riparian area, in an area where there wasn't even any trees or shrubs really, well, shrubs. And so we kind of nice that up and moved on. And then we got a little call from the, is it the DNR?
Probably was the Conservation District.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so then I went to their meeting and, and we came up with a plan for that area. So it wasn't like we destroyed the entire area. It was 25 or 30 feet of it that we kind of got into. And I, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't disturb the rest of it. We were outside their boundaries for the rest of the stuff that we did.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Tim, one more question on this. So if, if we were to envision this as a completely vacant piece of property, no, no improvements on it, and this was going through a similar process or subdivision review, what, what typically would the riparian buffer width be? For just to bracket, any other considerations of what's, what's on, on the landscape there? Would it be 50 feet? Hard to say. I mean, does it vary depending on?
Certainly, certainly varies
The conditions.
Based on the scale of the stream, the reach of the stream. So I, I don't think it would be altogether that different. Both Butler and Laval, because of agriculture, have been marginalized in their riparian areas to some extent. And even this location, before Tim owned it, it was a fairly narrow ribbon going back decades. It's just that uses there are a little more intense now. So I suspect the number wouldn't really be appreciably different.
Okay, thanks. Let's talk about fencing. So what was your question again, Juanita? Just a general sense of whether or not rip, well, I, let me throw in a possible elaboration on that. What, what's the definition of open fencing as it's written here?
It'd be any type of fence, like a jack fence, a fence that allows for some flow of, you know, it could be even like a typical, and Juanita is very familiar with these, any wildlife-friendly fencing. Just that
So what I heard, so what I heard was a concern of the adjoining property owner would be making sure that their cattle or livestock are, are contained. So is the fencing proposed as far as open fencing goes? And I just did a, for those listening to the transcript or reading the transcript, I just did a hand signal of, of quotation marks. So would this suffice as far as the concerns of, of constraining livestock?
Well, I think maybe Tim's concern is that if, if you remove the fence that's in this photo, it opens up a piece of his perimeter. We're not really recommending that any part of the perimeter go away except for this piece right here. The open fencing that we're recommending would be demarcating that western boundary of Butler Creek within the property. So what would be running perpendicular to the fence that you're looking at? That would be the open fencing. So
But what we're seeing here is not what is referenced in condition 15?
It is. This is the fencing along the southern edge of Angus Lane. So there's basically two separate sentences. The first sentence deals with the fencing that's in the photo. The second sentence addresses future fencing along the western side of Butler Creek.
So what we're looking at here, is this, is this separating Mr. Ivey's property from the property to the north or not?
Essentially, yeah. It's the fence between his property and Angus Lane. And I think we could live with a repair of this if there's a compromise in the air. And what, the way it would be worded in the altered condition would be fencing along the southern edge of Angus Lane shall be repaired.
So I guess as far as any repair, is, is simply repairing this adequate or would replacing this with open fencing? I guess we've got two things going on. We've got security concerns on the part of Mr. Ivey and then we also have, well, three things. We have concerns of having some fencing that will keep livestock from going back and forth. But then presumably we are wanting some sort of fencing that is wildlife-friendly, which this may not be. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, I think the staff recommendation is only to eliminate this possibly 10 or 15-foot section of fence and then to install a, a new fence boundary along the western edge of Butler Creek. So we don't object to the security need. In fact, if, I think we would be okay with the compromise of just repairing what you see in the photo and then recommending additional, it would be fencing within fencing essentially that demarcates the riparian buffer edge.
Just so that operations within the Ivey property does not encroach on the
It's more about that. It's, yes, it's defining that riparian buffer edge.
So I guess going back to what we're seeing here in the photo, would, would a plan still be required for the repair of this? Or is the plan and installation for open fencing, that's about the others, that's not about what we're seeing here?
Correct.
But you could run jackleg up the western edge of Butler Creek.
That's right.
And then it corners and runs along Angus Lane and
Or you could end it right at the boundary fence, at the current boundary.
Which is at Angus Lane?
Yeah.
So what sort of repair? So the options are, as it's currently written, just removing this. What sort of repair would, would be adequate, I guess? And what would we be expecting? And, and I would be open to suggestions from the applicant or Mr. Ivey here. Come on up if you want. Just trying to wrap my mind around what, what it is that we're repairing here.
Well, basic, Tim Ivey again. Basically, that area, well, we just stopped when, you know, we were told to. And, and so that fence actually never quite got completed to the gate that goes across or that opens up to access Angus Lane because Paul Hanson still runs cattle there.
I'm sorry, Tim, can we, this, this photo is really hard for me to imagine what we're talking about with. If, maybe we go back to like the county website or eh, where I can kind of see what's on the
How about right there with that?
Okay, maybe that'll
Either of those.
Yeah.
So if you can just use the pointer to show us where that piece of cyclone fence.
It's right here.
Right there. But if you had jackleg fence going up to it, right? And then what hap, the, the cows, the cows coming from the north are just coming down Butler Creek?
Mr. Ivey?
Yeah, they just, they, they feed that hole. That's his alfalfa ground right there. And so in the fall, he turns out his cows and they, they feed that section. And so we have to, let me tell you, cows walk into a nursery, there's some good stuff there for them. And so we have to keep the cows out there. And, and we had just put a, like a barbed wire gate across from where the chain link fence stopped up to the gate that comes off from Butler Creek Road onto Angus Road, just as a temporary thing. And we didn't get a chance to cement posts in or anything else like that so we could even draw the wire tight. And that's, one of the reasons it looks dilapidated was because it was done kind of not right. We didn't, we didn't get a chance to finish it. So, or we didn't, we just stopped.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, Tim, just going on to this, elaborating on this point of repair, are there any, is there any more specificity that we would, if we go this route, that we would want as far as what the repair would, would constitute?
Yeah, I can't really think of any. I mean, a, a landowner is entitled to put up a fence along his or her perimeter by state law. So it would be hard for us to be overly prescriptive, I think.
Although we are being somewhat prescriptive
By saying
Fence within
Make it go away.
Parcel.
But you could just run three strand barbed wire up the riparian area and then over towards Butler Creek and that is wildlife-friendly and keeps cows out and am I right or is it?
Mr. Ivey would, is there something we're missing here?
Yeah, there, barbed wire doesn't keep thieves out very well. And that will be my ultimate
That's, thank you.
Goal is to not lose a whole bunch more equipment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, another question I have for you, Tim, on a different topic. So given what the land use elements, land use designation, So given what the land use elements, land use designation prescribes for this parcel, would commercial, would a commercial use even be allowed in here? Or are we right out of the chute, looking at a legal non-conforming use that's out of sync with our growth policy?
I think commercial is definitely part of this operation, but we acknowledge that there's an agricultural component here and always has been. So especially as the agricultural portion of this operation expands, I think our conclusion growth policy-wise is that this complies with the rural residential and agriculture land use designation. And I don't know that that gets forfeited with commercial being some aspect of it, if that makes sense. And being growth policy as well, it's not prescriptive like a zoning designation. This is an unzoned location. We didn't feel we could go that far.
Okay, that's helpful. Other questions, Juanita? I guess just a couple of general observations. Suffice it to say, I'm not real happy about the violations that have transpired over the past number of years. And I never like being in a position where we're having to take some action in order to just make what's on the ground legal after the fact. But that withstanding, I also am eager to keep us out of court. That's never a great alternative for anyone, and it certainly seems like this is a means to that. And I would be willing to make some compromise on the fence repair issue. And we can certainly make individual amendments if we want here in a second. I am inclined to stay the course with the Fish Wildlife and Parks recommendation on the buffer, recognizing that there will be an opportunity to create a management plan that I think can be tailored to what's on the ground, and recognizing we'll have power this time, so hopefully some of the plantings have a better chance of survival. Other thoughts, Juanita? And I guess what would be in order next would be if, beyond any comments you have, if we wanted to make individual amendments to any of the conditions, we could do that and then move into the main motion. Would that be correct, Tim?
Sure. I think that would work.
So Fish Wildlife and Parks and Five Valleys and Audubon, they've been out on the property. They've seen Butler Creek and seen the riparian concerns that they have? No?
Tim?
Well, I wasn't there with either Five Valleys or Fish Wildlife and Parks, but they, Fish Wildlife and Parks took the time to do a fairly in-depth analysis, and they tapped not only their wildlife biologists, but some of their fisheries people in weighing in on the proposal. So, and I can't necessarily speak for them, but I think they did speak from an area of expertise and understanding of this location.
Okay, I was just wanting to know that someone's actually been on the ground as Mr. Ivey's been on the ground and sees what the conditions really are.
I guess we can't verify 100% that someone's been on the ground.
Yeah, I mean, staff was out there, Missoula Rural Fire's been out there. Can't remem-- John, who all were we with? It was, I think, planning staff.
Mr. Kellogg?
Missoula Rural.
Kellogg, PCI.
PCI.
In answer to your question, from the communications that have come from Audubon and from Fish Wildlife and Parks, it appeared that Gerard from Audubon actually did go to the site. It appeared also from the letter from Fish Wildlife and Parks that they were going based on their in-office information and hadn't visited the site. So, but who was the, I'm sorry, who was the lady in your new employee?
It would have been Kylie Paul, who's our natural resource specialist.
Kylie Paul was on site.
And Todd Kleats has been there a number of times.
In the riparian vegetation. So it's, for the hardy plants that are there, it's a good, solid riparian vegetation going.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hart?
In terms of the Fish Wildlife and Parks visit, I'm confident that their fishery biologist, Lad Noteck, has visited this site, because he would have been part of the team with the conservation district supervisors, who visited the site when there was a complaint made and the restoration requirements from that political agency.
Thank you. Okay, so if you don't have any additional questions, we could certainly take any amendments that we want, if we were so inclined to entertain them.
I'm ready to make a motion to close these violation loops and move forward.
How about the fencing? Are we willing to entertain repair of the fence?
Yeah, repair of the fence and come to a solution that achieves your needs and achieves Fish Wildlife and Parks' needs.
Okay, so the motion would be related to Condition 15. So, Tim, would it read something, if we're wanting to look at repair, would it simply read fencing along the southern edge of Angus Lane shall be repaired from the riparian resource area adjacent to Butler Creek?
Or repaired along...
Just repaired, I guess.
Just repaired.
Just repaired.
You could, well, you could say repaired along the riparian resource area adjacent to Butler Creek, and then it helps put it in space somewhere.
Okay, is that adequate, repair of the fence? Okay, so that is the motion. I'll second that. Any further discussion on repairing the fence? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Tim, could you bring up what the main motion would be? And is there anything else that would need to be changed in other conditions related to the fence repair based on that?
No, I don't believe so. The other issue was that buffer width, that would have, that would mean a couple of conditions would have to change if you go that direction. But there's the motion.
Okay. Notwithstanding any other amendments, this would be the main motion on the screen.
Okay, so are we trying to decide this buffer thing right now?
Yes. So if you were inclined to change the buffer, you certainly could make that motion or not. If not, we could just go with the main motion that's on the screen there.
Okay, and I haven't been on the property, and so I can't really speak, and so to what 25 feet or 50 is. But if Fish Wildlife and Parks has been on the property, and the riparian experts have been on the property saying that it should be 100, but then staff feels that 50 is appropriate, I'm inclined to go with staff. But I do appreciate your concerns, Mr. Ivey, about the, you know, loss of 25 feet. And so I'm kind of struggling with that, because I just haven't been on the site.
Mr. Ivey?
Yes, Tim Ivey. Well, to put this kind of in context, if you look at the map, if you have 50-foot, a 50-foot boundary, you're going to be out in Butler Creek Road. So that's, I mean, on one side, it's taking Butler Creek Road. I don't think they're going to get rid of that. And on the other side, you're taking it away, well, you're both ways. You're taking usable property away from me. But, I mean, that's a substantial amount of property when you consider the length of it, and it's only 6.33 acres to begin with, and that ends up being more than an acre of ground that we're losing, or I don't know exactly what, protecting, I guess. And DNR's whole idea with the riparian area was, they said that they were 15 feet from the center of the creek, and there's no place that there's riparian vegetation outside of 15 feet from the center of the creek, on, you know, 15 feet on either side. So I don't know what that's worth, but that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Tim, do you know offhand what the distance is between, what the buffer would be between Butler Creek Road and the creek?
It's a little hard to scale, but this would be the edge of the buffer if it were 15 feet wide. So if you go with the lesser width of 25 feet, add about 10 feet to that.
Okay, I'm fine with the 25 feet. Do you have comments?
Well, I'm, yeah, Tim.
Just an informational piece. If you go with 25 feet, that affects Condition Number 9, and that's fine. We can change that 50 to 25. If you go to Condition Number 17, if you drop that number, if you drop the number on Condition Number 9, the fill removal distance of 50 feet would stand. So I would reword Condition 17 to say, "All fill within 50 feet of the Butler Creek riparian resource area shall be removed." And just eliminate coincident with the riparian resource buffer, because the buffer has changed. It's gone from 50 to 25. We are trying to make those things match up. They don't have to. They certainly don't have to. Just because Todd, the floodplain administrator's recommendation was for about 50 feet of fill removal, which is the same distance as the buffer. But those two numbers can be different. I think functionally that would work okay.
So currently, what we're seeing on the screen, the shaded area is 50 feet, correct?
No, the shaded area is the floodplain.
That's the 100-year floodplain?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a graphic of just the buffer?
Yeah, the buffer is this dash line right here. And that's 15 feet. So add another 10 to that, and you'd have your 25-foot buffer if you choose to go that direction. I think the number that we would like to stay more firm with is the 50 feet of fill removal. I think the 25-foot...
That makes sense.
We could live with that. I mean, as far as making a recommendation.
I guess, again, my only heartburn is the professional judgment of Fish Wildlife and Parks, which I don't take lightly, and I recognize this will have impacts on the usable space of the parcel. Mr. Kellogg or Mr. Ivey, what, other than just kind of the sheer acreage that would be eaten up by 25 versus 50 feet, could you talk a little bit about what would be within that? If it's 25 feet, what's between there and the 50 feet that would not be usable? Are there, is it a parking area, structures, presumably not structures? Is there an opportunity for any compromise between 25 and 50 feet? Or is it all or nothing?
Looking at the here photo, if we took it to 25 feet, I think we're roughly getting close to where the first gate is coming into the entrance to what now is the parking area of the nursery. If that went to 50 feet...
I'm sorry, Mr. Kellogg, can, where's the entrance?
Tim, is there any way we can kind of get walked through on the screen? John, if you want to help control the mouse over here?
Tim's pointing, right there is the, where the gate is into the parking area.
And what do you think the distance is between the gate and the creek?
That's approximately, I think where he put that point, is about 50 feet from the riparian area, if I'm not mistaken. So to go 25 feet would be the nearer side of the gate that opens up there. And it's hard to point it out if we're not on the ground. With...
So I guess my question would be, for instance, would, what width of buffer would allow you to retain kind of your current entrance and access? Is it 25 feet, 30 feet, 35 feet?
I believe 25 feet. Trying to remember, is, did Todd have concerns over leaving an existing driveway in the floodplain? I don't think he did.
No, I think it's just a matter of getting a floodplain permit when there's paving or dirt work or whatever.
Okay, so, no, the 25 feet would allow continued access, I believe, via that current gate there. I guess the suggestion on the 25 feet was more that it would take a concerted effort to re-vegetate either 50 feet or 25 feet. And I think the rate of success would improve drastically if it were reduced to 25 feet. And that was the reason that I brought that up.
Tim, is there any chance you could pull up a Google Earth map of this, or the property information system?
Thank you.
And clearly, this is not what's there this moment on the ground, but, so what I'm trying to get at is roughly, distance-wise, what are we, there we go, what are we looking at? 25, 50 feet, something in between?
So there's a, roughly a 50-foot distance there, and then shrinking it down to 25. So that would be buffer right there.
John?
I think you're taking it from the creek and...
Not the center of the creek?
Yeah, and I think...
Yeah, I'm trying to go from the edge of green vegetation, but I might not be succeeding here.
Because I think I identified maybe 10 feet at least, 10 or more feet on that side of the creek, as part of the riparian area existing, and so from the edge of that.
It seems like 25 would allow for that current entrance to still work.
So I, so my question is, what is the maximum riparian buffer that would still allow the existing entrance to work?
Thank you.
I would say that 25 feet would probably take it to the near edge of the fence, the way I identified the north end of the riparian area, that it widens out a little bit right at where it comes up to Angus Lane there. If you go 50 feet from where I drew the boundary of the riparian area, you're going to be into that... you're going to be into that entrance there.
Tim, is there, there's, without ground truthing it, is there any way to eyeball this?
Yeah, I would suspect if you're doing the 50, you're probably into the entrance area.
So, so bring it back to the southeast.
Brings it to that gate post or that?
Yeah. Yeah, take it from the, the edge of the, yeah, from there to the edge.
Yeah, there's, there's about 25. I would say you're safe at 25, but once you're getting 50, that, that would alter that aspect of things.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I just want to be absolutely crystal clear that if we were to teviate from the recommendations by Fish Wildlife and Park and others, that all of the violations would be addressed on this parcel and that there would be a concerted effort, once the power's back on, to keep the vegetation alive.
And remove the fill 50 feet. So that whole area kind of behind the, or from the gate to the riparian area is removed, right?
Yeah, all the, all the conditions would be fulfilled. So just to reiterate, Tim, even in light of the professional recommendations from Fish Wildlife and Parks and others, you think cap staff would be okay with a 25-foot buffer?
I think we could support it, yes.
Okay.
Like heartburn support or okay support?
Well, in these, in these public processes, there's sort of a pragmatic side where if, if you go to the ideal edge, sometimes getting compliance is more difficult. It might be easier to get compliance with something that is more manageable. Therefore, a lesser buffer. And again, there's a lot of flexibility in the riparian planting plan. As far as what they put together, there doesn't have to be dense vegetation without, throughout that 25 feet. I think our interest was giving the existing woody vegetation room to breathe, if you will, on that western edge and getting fill out of there and getting parking area taken out of there. That, those are some of our primary goals, whatever that distance is.
Great.
And 25 feet would at least, to some extent.
Yeah.
Address that. Okay.
Is there anywhere else that needs to be changed than if we go with 25 feet besides nine and 17 and 15?
I think 17 would be the only change. I would just remove the clause coincident with the riparian resource buffer for 17 because that's more of a floodplain condition. And we want to maintain that 50-foot reference so that 50, that fill within 50 feet does get removed still. It just happens to be no longer coincident with the buffer since the buffer is a lesser width.
Okay. Question for Mr. Iby, come on up if you could. So before we move forward with the 25-foot buffer motion, can I have assurance that all the conditions will be met and that you'll make a concerted effort to develop a riparian management plan within that 20 feet that will actually be implemented?
Well, we've been kind of waiting on water. And as far as removal of the, the fill area, that fill area was, they were 40-foot bins. That's why it happens to be about 50 feet from the creek because we're 15 feet from the creek. So, and that's no problem. I mean, we can, actually that, that's pretty good gravel. We can use that elsewhere. So, you know, that's, all we're doing is kind of waiting to start doing something.
So is that a yes? Okay, that is a yes. Okay, thanks. Okay, Juanita, do you want to make a motion?
I, I do. I, I move that Ivy's nursery subdivision be approved based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report.
And that would include a modification to condition number nine, which changes the riparian buffer from 50 feet to 25 feet. And that also, by way of reference, would include a modification to condition 17, which strikes coincident with the riparian resource buffer.
And, well, 15?
Yeah, I think we already.
But we've already done 15, okay, great.
Is that?
Yeah, your intent is clear, yeah. I think we got it.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We look forward to seeing everything come into compliance. Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, any other business to come before the commission this morning? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned.